For our next meeting, we have a couple of birthdays. So happy birthday, Dan O'Neil and Commissioner Bush Nessbit. All right. Thank you for coming tonight. If you have not been to a planning commission meeting before, this is a legal hearing. And if anybody plans to speak, you think you might want to speak, I need you to go ahead and stand and just raise your hand. And I will have you just say, do you promise to tell the truth as to the best of your ability tonight? If you do, say, I will. All right. Thanks so much. Okay. Thank you. All right. And also, tonight, we'll hear from those that are on the agenda. And they will have their opportunity. And then I will ask for anyone who wants to speak in opposition or to talk in favor of something. Just be ready to share your comments, keep them brief, and share your name and your address before you speak. And with that, please stand with me and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, staff, could we have the roll?
Commissioner Nessbit?
Here.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Present.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Present.
Commissioner Young?
Here.
Chair Wiley?
Here. All right. Thank you. Yes.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. I have a first and a second?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to pull case 26-600-03.
Okay. Make a motion to that? Okay. All right. We're going to pull the case out.
There's a second.
There's a second.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I do have a second. All right. So we are now going to vote on just the minutes as part of the consent agenda. And would you call the roll?
Commissioner Nessbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Chair Wiley.
Yes. And the motion passes six to zero. All right. So we have pulled case number 25-600-03. And Commissioner Nessbit, you have the floor.
Yeah, I'd like to hear what the staff's saying about this. I mean, I've read through it, but I'm not quite getting exactly what's the deal here, Gabe.
Yes. This is an existing pole sign located at the Walmart in the Blue Ridge Crossing Commercial Subdivision. The subdivision straddles city boundaries, so Kansas City is where the Walmart is located. And then the specific pole sign is technically within the Independence City limits. Independence has regulations pertaining to signs. For pole signs specifically, there is an allowable pole district. That pole district area is defined by Lee Summit Road and 70 Highway. So anything to the north of 70 Highway and to the west of Lee Summit Road is within the pole sign district. This pole sign is located outside of the boundaries of the allowable pole sign district. So it falls under the regulations of legal nonconforming signs in Section 800 of Chapter 14. So Section 800 of Chapter 14 states that alterations to an existing pole sign, a legal nonconforming pole sign, they are, they permit maintenance and replacing the face of a sign. So a sign is composed of its support structure and then a cabinet. And the cabinet sits atop the support structure. In this case, the applicant is not simply changing out the face of the sign. Instead, they're removing the cabinet on top of the support structure and replacing it with a like cabinet, very similar in design. However, because they're replacing the cabinet, that triggers the necessity for a special sign permit.
Now, is it going bigger?
If it's, I don't believe so.
That is a good question for the applicant, but I believe it's basically virtually the
same sign area.
Okay. For some reason, I thought it was going bigger, the way I read it, but maybe I misread it.
I was going to add, there is kind of like a sunburst structure on the top of the existing sign that will be removed with this new sign.
Okay. So it's actually going smaller, then?
It might actually be a little bit smaller.
Okay.
Okay. Any additional questions? All right. I'll entertain a motion.
I'm making a motion. We approve case 25-600-03.
Right.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Any other discussion? All right. I will call for the vote.
Commissioner Nessbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Chair Wiley.
Yes. And the motion passes six to zero on case number 25-600-03. All right. Let's move on to our public hearings. The first one being case 25-1015 for rezoning at 201 East Partridge Avenue. And staff, I'll entertain your report.
Yes. This is an application for rezoning for a property located off of Nolan Road along Partridge Avenue. It's in, right next door to a subdivision of condominiums called the Bella Vista Condominiums. This particular property is located, yeah, just about in Central Independence, southwest Central Independence. Here's a notification area map for the subject site. It's required by city code. A bit of zoning and area history. So as I discussed previously, the subject site has condominiums surrounding it to the north and to the east. And those are indicated as apartments. To the west is a vacant parking lot. To the south is a segment of railroad. And further south is a car dealership. And then across Partridge Avenue, there is a restaurant located there, Golden Corral. The subject site is approximately 55,000 square feet in size. It was originally zoned for light manufacturing. When the condominium subdivision was originally developed, the zoning of the surrounding site was zoned moderate. And in 1986, the site was developed and consists of a four-story office. Containing approximately 30,000 square feet of floor area. Sorry about that. The site has about 87 parking spaces. And in 2009, the city adopted the Unified Development Ordinance, updated the zoning classifications, and the zoning of the subject site was updated to neighborhood commercial. And the property is bisected by zoning district classification. So part of it is that R-18 moderate density residential, the condominiums, and the other part of it remains C-1. The applicant seeks to rezone the entire property to C-1, the light commercial. And so the site would be composed of one single zoning classification. And the reason being is because they're pulling a fence permit. And so one of the requirements was to rezone the property to commercial. So their property would conform to the commercial standards for their proposed fence. The proposal conforms with the Independence for All strategic plans. So the rezoning of this property is corrective. It will ensure the continued commercial use. The comprehensive plan envisions the area to be designated for community commercial uses. And the plan promotes businesses and jobs facilitating development-ready sites. The property is in the Nolan Now Plan area, and there are no apparent historical or archaeological issues with this property. Here's a site plan of the site, so you can see the four-story building and the, be the north, sorry, excuse me, southwest corner of the property. An aerial photograph. And an example of a proposed wrought iron fence that the applicant has requested to construct around the parking lot of their site. So I'll go back one photo, just so you can see the, the parking area is in front of the commercial building. And applicant requested to construct a wrought iron fence around the parking area. That is part of another separate application. The subject of tonight's proposal is solely the rezoning. Staff recommends approval of this rezoning with no conditions.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions for staff?
Chair?
Yes, Commissioner.
Okay. So they're only wanting to rezone half this lot, is that what that says?
Yeah, that's a good way to put it. It's rezoning half of the lot because it's currently like two zoning classifications, moderate density residential and C-1. And the reason for that is because back in the 70s, when, again, when that development was being constructed, there was a rezoning application, and the rezoning split the lot right down the middle. So now, in 2025, 50 years later, because of that decision to rezone the property straight down the middle, new development ordinances state that the lot must be composed of one single zoning classification. So now that they're trying to build and develop their property, that we're requiring the property to be rezoned.
Okay. So I guess I'm looking, okay, so the lot that has just the parking lot up next to Nolan Road, that's a different lot, is what we're saying?
Interestingly enough, yes. That is a completely different property owner and different property.
Okay. Now, the next question I'm going to have, are you guys going to let them put the fence out by the street? Is that correct?
So again, that's a separate request.
I know it's a separate request.
And it's not our decision as staff to make that determination. They will currently have scheduled, actually, I should say, to go before the Board of Adjustment this upcoming Thursday. So if you'd like to attend, feel free to.
Okay. Okay.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Any additional questions for staff before we invite the applicant up? All right. I invite the applicant up.
Hello, everyone. My name is Dr. Lila Scott, and I'm Vice President of the USCO Business located in Independence, Missouri. My address is 404 Northeast Pavilion Drive, Grain Valley, Missouri, 64029.
Great. And what do we need to know about your project?
So the project is, yes, fencing is one of the goals to protect the property. What happened in the past, we had a lot of homeless people coming and leaving their, their things on the property. So I do have a police report with me that is, last year, 20, actually, yes, last year in October, we had multiple shooting happening on the property, damaging the windows, and the windows are huge. The police report was made by the officer, and what it said, that the shooting was unknown that happened before, after 6:30 PM on a 10, October 28, 2024. And unknown firearm into the building multiple times in multiple, in multiple spaces. Two bullet holes were discovered on the north side of the building, which damaged two windows. And two bullet holes were located on the west side of the building, which damaged two more windows. So obviously, it is pretty concerning for a nice neighborhood, because we do have apartments and condominiums on the left-hand side, and we do have restaurants just across the street, and multiple businesses on the right side across the street. So the shooting itself is pretty concerning. Multiple times on multiple occasions, I do have pictures with me, people were dropping their garbages on the property. And it happened not in the designated spot, but anywhere on the property. We found four mattresses in pretty bad conditions. We found needles, and we did found one bed frame that was actually not in the garbage container, but next to it. So obviously, it created pretty interesting negative image of the building itself, because the building is beautiful. We do plan to, to improve the green areas. There is, one tree is broken. We don't, we are not planning to remove any trees. We just want to add beauty to the neighborhood. It will create benefits, not just for the stakeholders, but for the neighbors as well, because it is a beautiful place. It's easy to access. We are planning to bring 15 more people and job openings to that place. There is a high school next to that, so kids, whoever will not go to colleges, they can apply for jobs. So it is a beautiful place, but unfortunately, it's not safe for, for people to walk around. And sometimes, things are happening in the evening. So we do appreciate. Thank you. And I do have papers with me, if you would like to take a look.
Okay. Any questions for our applicant?
Chair?
Ma'am?
Yes.
He's got, we have questions for you.
Sure.
Okay. So you're, the reason why you're doing this, because you don't think it's safe there, correct? That's why you want to put a fence around?
That's the ma, yes, the major concern, because sometimes, and I talk to people, cleaning services people coming in, and they usually come on Saturday's morning. And they say that when they come at 6:00, there are multiple cars, and sometimes people just sit on the parking lot in the car. We did have three occasions since April of this year, when we had people just sitting on the stairs to the building, eating. And they had to make their way through and say, excuse me, can I go through? And, and they're females, and they're expressing their, they're not confident to go there without. And I actually had to go and check myself, and I said, okay, I'll come, I'll come at 6:00 to see what's going on. And I did witness the same thing. So it is concerning, because it is beautiful area, and people are walking around. And I did see multiple families just walking with their dogs. But the damage and the visual that creates the garbage disposals and, and people just sitting there and leaving their lunch boxes and, and garbage on the side, that no one takes care of. So we have to come and clean it without making it a big deal in Collin County to help us out.
So do you plan on putting a, a, what I think, a guarded gate or something, or a controlled gate?
Yes. So it will be the generic gates that is, just simple gates, just to keep people from dropping things and leaving.
Okay. That's fine.
And it will be automatic, so the garbage machine or people will be able to come in, and people with specific access will be able to come in, but no one else.
Great. Any additional questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you very much.
I have a question.
Oh, excuse me, just a moment.
Yes.
What is your intention as far as height of the fence is concerned?
So I believe we were checking four to six feet. Is that right? Is that the generic? So four is the lowest, and then the six is the highest?
And that will be addressed for the Board of Adjustment. That's not a decision for us.
Right. But we will be following the guidelines that are there. We're not planning to do anything extraordinary. It will be within the county guidelines.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So my understanding, staff, is this is because the zoning's just messed up, and we need to correct it?
That's correct.
Okay. Anybody in the room that would like to speak in favor of this case? In favor of it? All right. Anyone in the room that'd like to speak in opposition of this? Okay, go ahead and come forward. Please state your name and your address.
Stephen Calderoni. I live at 301 East Partridge Ave. And I'm the president of the Bella Vista condo association. And as far as the fence, that's against city ordinance, do not have a high-profile fence to bordering a residential area. And so that's a complete no-no there. Also, as far as the persons, homeless and stuff like that, there's a homeless camp across the railroad tracks there. And they're, they go everywhere, between the McDonald, you know, everywhere you go, walking up and down Nolan and everything. And I think that the fence isn't the answer personally. It's to do something about the camp, encampment or something. I'm sorry they're in that situation and everything. But I've noticed some of the goings-on and stuff as I walk around the neighborhood and everything, but I don't feel for a second a fence is going to stop anything. And I think, I have a petition signed by 95% of the people in the 301 and 303 buildings bordering, where they want to put this fence in that is see-through wrought iron, where now it has a privacy fence, which is accordance with the city ordinance. That's why they're asking for a variance to do this, is because it's a city ordinance that they're supposed to have what's in place now. And I, like I say, I have the petition right here with all the signatures of 95% of the people that live in the 301 and 303 building, saying they do not want the fence. They want the privacy, high-screen fence that's supposed to be in place. Because there's children that play in the parking lot and stuff, and there's some adult activities when people are on break, smoking, things of that nature. And it's just, it's supposed to be a high pri, a high fence, you know, that's not, that's opaque, you know, which you can't see through and everything. And a lot of the persons, there's like three families live there, but the majority of the people are in their 70s and 80s. And we even have a 90-year-old gentleman that lives there. And I don't think, and partially noise level. And we're also thinking that trash could blow through from there if the fence was not, if it was open, a wrought iron type two onto our property. And just everything's wrong about it, in our opinion. And again, I have the signatures to back it up. And I plan on coming on the 17th to object as well, and then full force with anybody can get to come down there.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else like to speak in opposition? Okay. Seeing that, I'm going to close the public hearing. All right. Gabe, so since we are just deciding if we want to correct zoning, I'm going to choose to not worry about the fence. But there is no discussion of a fence unless we change the zoning. So currently, the zoning doesn't allow for the type of fencing they desire. And so the zoning must be changed to even have that conversation with the Board of Adjustment. Correct?
Yes. So since the property has two different zoning classifications, there's a conflict. So there's residential fence standards and commercial fence standards.
Right.
And in this case, they're wanting to build a fence. And as you stated, it's pertinent for their application for a variance. And I'll defer to Rick for any further comments on that.
Okay.
I was just going to add that the conflict with the zoning doesn't just affect the fence. It would affect any other future development or work that they may want to do on that site as well.
Because right now, it is both residential and commercial.
Correct.
And we are deciding if we want to allow for a rezoning to commercial.
That is correct.
Okay. Commercial only, yes. So any additional comments to the staff?
Got a question.
Commissioner?
Okay, Rick, this gentleman's point about it's now it's going to be commercial, but up to residential. So does the Board of Adjustment have that power to say, okay, well, you can, if you want to put in this open fence, you can do it?
So the Board of Adjustment does have the power to alleviate the, like, in this case, it would be in the front of the property, so they have the authority to, to adjust those. They don't have the adjut, they don't have the authority to change the zoning district, which would have to happen before they could do this with the fence. Is that your question? Sorry.
No, there's a, there's a privacy fence abutting the parking lot, which I believe is, I'm sorry, to the east. Correct?
Correct.
So.
So you're.
That's what I'm saying, because it's by, he's right, it's supposed to be there. But if you change the zoning, it still says, the ordinance still says it has, something like that has to be there. So either the owner of the property needs to make some kind of adjustment, or the Board of Adjustment will say, well, it doesn't matter anymore. They'll just have to take it down, because I'm assuming, the way it's positioned, I'm assuming it's that building's fence, wooden fence, the commercial building's fence.
One, one moment, please. So, yes, I just wanted to make sure that the fence was on their property. So it is on their property, and it is required between a commercial and a residential. So yes, technically, the fence would have to be there.
And the Board of Adjustment doesn't really have any authority to change the.
That is correct. That is correct. By the code, the code would require that buffer yard screening.
So if the change is to commercial, and they have to leave that fence there, and they have to add the other fence, there's really no conflict, as far as I can see.
Well, the Board of Adjustment would have to give them the ability to put that fence along the front of their property.
Oh, you mean along the street side?
Yes.
Okay. But, but it's not against the, or it's not against city code for a commercial building to add an open fence along the street?
It would not meet the setback requirements of a.
So they have to set back 25 feet or something like that?
Yes. It would have to be in line with the, the building. Yeah. So that's what they would, that's what they would need the adjustment for.
I see.
Yep.
Okay. And just out of curiosity, on the west side, there's a big concrete retaining wall, which I don't know whether that's theirs or the old Perkins, Perkinsville Restaurant, if that belongs to that property. And is there any ordinance about positioning the fence along that? I mean.
No, there wouldn't be. I'm looking, I'm looking at it now. Give me a second.
Because if it's theirs, they could probably put it on top of the wall. But if it's the other property, they'd have to put it along the parking lot, which frankly creates a unsafe situation.
So they would have to put it within their property. One of the things that we're kind of looking at here is, you know, a lot of our lot lines, which are put on the county, aren't necessarily surveyed in their location. So they would have to, wherever they could put the fence, they would have to make sure it's on their property. So it would, it would, it would appear to be that they would have to put it basically right behind the back of that curb along the property line, or along the parking lot. Does that make sense?
Not really, but I understand what you're saying. I mean, that's a bad place for a fence, because of the, because there's not much width there. But any, either, anyway. So I'm going to say this again, I just want to make sure. So I'm going to say this again, I just want to make sure. The Board of Adjustment would have to leave that wooden fence there.
Yes, it would be required per the buffer yard separation.
Okay, and so really, the only, the only thing that they would have the power to do would be to decide whether that fence would be on the street level or back.
That is correct, yes.
And the zoning needs to be corrected, which it's obviously a commercial property. So I, like I say, I, I think it's kind of a non-issue. And these good folks here need to go to the Board of Adjustment and make their, make their grievances known. But I just, that's, that's correct, right? I mean, as far as, as far as a privacy fence.
That is correct, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
So if I hear right, there should be no change to the privacy fence that is a current concern for the residents?
Yes, unless they intend to do something with it, but...
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner.
I move for approval of case 25-100-15.
All right, do I have a first, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, a first and second. Any final comments?
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner.
Now, Rick, if we change this from the PUD, we're going to C1 Neighborhood Commercial, is that where we're going to?
Yes.
So basically, C1 Neighborhood Commercial means no overnight businesses or anything can be in there, is that correct?
That is correct.
Do they have a specific time they got to stop? Good difference between C1 and C1 Neighborhood?
Eight o'clock. I think it is eight, but I don't want to say.
Give us one second, please.
So I just want to make sure that we're not opening this up so it could be a all-night business or something like that.
There's no time restriction that we can see for C1 or C2.
Okay. But C1 Neighborhood, I mean, because you guys got their C1 Neighborhood commercials, that got a time restriction on it?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
So a PUD 18, does it have a time restriction on it? I'm just trying to make sure we're covering ourselves, in case we opens up for midnight or something.
Yeah, I understand. The, no, I don't know what the PUD was conditioned on. It is possible that a PUD could be conditioned, but I don't know what this PUD has been conditioned for, if any hours of operation.
But a Neighborhood Commercial is different than a C1. I mean, this is the first time I've seen Neighborhood.
It's basically the same thing.
Basically the same thing.
Yeah, it's the same thing.
Why, why are we saying Neighborhood Commercial then? What's the difference?
Because, oh my God, because the C1 is considered Neighborhood Commercial.
Okay.
It is a lesser commercial than the C2.
Right, yeah, I know that, because C2, you can have cars parked overnight, and cars parked, that's why, that's why I like the C1, but I didn't know if the Neighborhood meant there's something that they can't have all night.
No, it's, the distinction is the difference between a C1 and a C2. So a C1, we consider it Neighborhood Commercial, and then a C2 is just general commercial.
Well, should we have that, I mean, I guess just currency of that, okay. That's all I have to question, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any additional? All right, we have a first and a second motion. I will call for the vote.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Yes, and the motion passes 6-0 to rezone for case number 25-100-15. All right, we will move on to case number 25-200-05, a special use permit for 11037 East Winter Road. Staff, your report, please.
Yes, this is an application for a special use permit approval of a convenience store in the Inglewood Arts District along Winter Road in western northwest Independence. Here's a notification area map as required by city code. A bit of zoning and area history for the commercial space, so it's located within the Arts District, which was approved in 2011. To the north, you've got a mix of general retail and personal services. To the east, you've got a medical service and a dentist's office. To the south is, to the best of staff's knowledge, a nonprofit educational institution, so a school. To the west is a mix of personal services and a museum and cultural center, that'd be the Puppetry Arts Institute. The tax parcel on which the proposed convenience store will be located on is about 8,400 square feet in size. It's a multi-tenant commercial space with four tenant spaces, according to city records. County records indicate the structure was built in 1940, and the tenant space at the proposed commercial, or, sorry, excuse me, the proposed convenience store will be located in is about 2,250 square feet in size. There is additional parking in the rear of the commercial space, and the applicant has indicated that on a site plan, although the Inglewood Arts Zoning District doesn't have parking requirements for, for commercial uses. Here's a site plan for the tax parcel, so you see that parking in rear, a trash enclosure, and a traffic circulation plan for the off-street parking. Floor plan of the commercial space shows that the primary entrance to the commercial space is located off of Harvard Avenue on the east, and it has storefrontage along Winter Road. There is a large walk-in cooler on the southeast corner of the store, some display shelves, a stove, along with the commercial kitchen where food will be prepared, and then a counter. Staff does recommend approval of the special use permit application with the following conditions. The applicant must comply with all use regulations as prescribed by section 14426 as they relate to convenience stores. The applicant must obtain a certificate of occupancy for the commercial space in accordance with section 14708 of the city code and comply with all requirements of the building official. The applicant must maintain and obtain an independence business license in accordance with chapter five of the city code. And lastly, the applicant must obtain an independence health permit in accordance with chapter 11 of the city code. That concludes my presentation, I'm open to any questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff? All right, I am going to invite the applicant forward. And since there are two of you, if, if you're speaking, just make sure you're in front of the microphone.
My name is Ali Hassan, and my address is 7007...
Make sure you're in front of the microphone before you speak. And go ahead and raise that up if you're, if it's too far from you.
My name is Ali Hassan, and my address is 7007 Lake Shore Drive, Red Town, Missouri. And, go ahead.
So we're building a convenience store on the...
And sir, state your name and your address.
My name is Kasim, address is 11037 East Winter Road. And then we, we are building a convenience store in the corner location, let's see. We are fully willing to cooperate with the Inglewood Business Association. They don't want us to sell tobacco or liquor, which we're fully listening to that. Our main focus will be fast food, which includes fried chicken, fried fish, cheeseburgers, and potato wedges, which come with fountain drinks. See, we'll also have bottled drinks, soda, tea, milk and eggs, in the walk-in cooler, with also snacks and candy. Our main focus will be fast food. Let's see. Now, the hours of operation, the business association didn't want us to do later than 9:00 PM, which we are fully complying with that. So... Okay, so some benefits, I think it's going to provide to the community include job opportunities for locals, a one-stop shop for people nearby. It's a walkable distance from like neighborhoods around the area, and it's a fast food option for people in the area, which they don't have any other fast foods around there at this time.
Yeah, that's all.
All right, is that it?
Yes, that's all.
All right. Any questions for the applicants? Okay, thank you. Actually, I'm, I'm just curious, what made you bring this idea to the Inglewood neighborhood?
Oh, because we've been, I've been coming down to the Inglewood neighborhood for a minute, my nieces and nephews get their haircuts in that area and stuff. So we always been coming here, and then they always want some snacks and candies and stuff. And I've been coming into this area for, like I said, four, four, my oldest one is six years, so five years now. And there used to be nothing around there, and our kids are there, they wanted some snack candies and stuff like that, so that's how we came up to that idea, that we can put up a convenience store in the neighborhood, and that we can have some fast food with that, too. There is not a lot of food going on over there. So that's what got us bringing the convenience store into that neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. And then you mentioned fried chicken. Who makes it?
Fried chicken. Yeah, all of us. My dad actually works at a convenience store, and he knows everything about the fried chicken, fish, all the kitchen stuff, so he's got trained both of us on everything.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, you can go ahead and be seated. All right, is there anyone present who'd like to speak in favor of this case? Anyone who'd like to speak in favor? All right, anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this? Tammy, I didn't see, did you swear in?
I did.
Okay, great, thank you. State your name and your address.
Tammy Parsons, 11100 East Winter Road. I have a business, and I also reside just kitty corner from where the proposed Blue Market is going to be. I've been there for 25 years in the community, and I love the little Inglewood District. In the first time of hearing about this was just a couple months ago, and it was brought up in an Inglewood Business Association meeting. And, you know, just, we're a small-knit group, and the first thing that the association was bothered about was we have a convenience store. We've had a convenience store for some time in the Inglewood area that has all the snacks and, and everything that the gentlemen were talking about having. It's La Plaza Market. And the community was worried about another convenience store coming in almost directly across the street. It's kitty corner, the opposite direction as I am kitty corner that way. But still, in wanting growth and everything to happen in Inglewood, we just wanted to learn more, you know, who are these folks? And, and we actually got an opportunity, there was three of us that sat down last week, and, and we met the gentleman, and it was a lovely conversation in the community and everything, and they, they seemed to be willing to listen to all of our concerns and everything, and making adjustments, like he spoke of the tobacco. That was a huge thing that nobody's in favor of, nobody was in favor of, of the alcohol happening that you see in a lot of the convenience stores and everything. And, and they dropped that pretty quickly. They also spoke of the family business being off of 40 Highway, and 40 Highway is a much busier strip, and there's a lot of convenience store up and down 40 Highway. We're a little community, and we're off of the main strips. So the traffic that this would bring is concerning, not only for myself, but for several people that seem to always come to me when they hear things are coming into the community, which is a double-edged knife, because you love it, but I'm truly not the mayor of the place, I'm just a voice, and I'm on a bus to create good in the area. So, you know, in doing my due diligence, I went over off of 40 Highway to see that family business. And it's wrapped and packed really nice, but is it, does it fit within the community? You know, when I looked at the outside, I, you can't see in through the windows. So that was concerning, it's concerning to a lot of the area now. The alcohol and the cigarettes, that was a huge part of that business, so to dismiss that so easily, to me, that's a lot for convenience stores. And again, I pick up cigarette butts and things every day. Homelessness is an issue all over our city, and it definitely has its fair share that comes through Inglewood, and we already battle picking up a lot of trash and just having people sleeping on the sidewalks and different things. And the, the folks that have called out to me have shared concern about that growing and being in the area. We're a community improvement district, a CID, and the CID provides a security. It's been, it's been so heavy in our community that we have asked that we need security. So that's where we put that extra tax money that comes into our area, is the CID pays for a security patrol that runs of the evening in there, and just kind of moves people along and everything, but we're worried about that increasing. And again, just being a small, a small area. The gentleman said that they had been over there for a year and a half. Now, nothing has happened in the last year and a half, but I find it interesting that we're just getting word of them even wanting to be in the Inglewood community. Again, we heard about it about two months ago, but we just met, we just asked to meet with them, and, and they met with us last week. Maybe had we asked two months ago, they would have probably met with us then, but, you know, we just met with them. So you've been there a year and a half. They didn't know about it being an Arts District. They knew that MAC was across the street, and that that's a, that's a familiar in-like grocery store, although they were going to bring in different candies from other parts of the country, and, and different things like that that they were going to have. So, you know, competition's not a bad thing, but it is a thing. And again, the biggest concern was affecting MAC's business, La Plaza Market. MAC, La Plaza Market does own their property, they've been property owners for some time. These gentlemen are, are rental. So for us, that, I, I mean, that has came up, that it was concerning. The gentleman spoke of Rosie's off of 40 Highway, and that that's, they had purchased Rosie's and had put in Rosie's. Well, Rosie's went out of business. Now, they didn't want to bring in-like food place like Rosie's to Inglewood, because we've got this amazing little diner called the Inglewood Cafe in Inglewood. And, and I think everybody, from your smiles on your face, you know about that. But yet, you've got chicken, and you've got hamburgers, and you've got those things still on the menu that you're going to offer and you're going to serve in the community, when we've got a little diner right down the street that has those food options, number one. We didn't even realize, and you think that you know everything about your community, but as I, I learn something every day, and there's always room for improvement, I didn't know that that facility even had a kitchen in it, or any of that. We've had so many food opportunities looking for spaces in the area. And I just wish that we would have known that, that there, there was an opportunity that could be right there, because we do want dining. There, there is a want for more food. There's just not a want for another convenience store that's that close to an existing convenience store within our neighborhood. And I guess that's all that I have to say.
Thank you very much. Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? All right, go ahead. And state your name and address.
Hi, Teresa Dorish, 1817 South Appleton Avenue, Independence, Missouri 64052. Okay, so this may be odd and inappropriate, but I am not actually speaking in opposition, but I'm not exactly speaking for, so I don't know where I fit in.
Just your comments, it's fine.
I did just want to share the experience, so Tammy mentioned that they were willing to meet with us, and I think that's absolutely lovely. They were very lovely to chat with, and we had a lot of questions for them. And as Tammy mentioned, we kind of wish we had that conversation a year ago, you know, and started this conversation a lot earlier, but we can only do what we can do now. I do want to share that they, again, to reiterate, were willing to make some changes, and what I would consider improvements to their business plan, to fit better into the neighborhood, such as, you know, closing a... such as, you know, closing around 9:00 PM or 8:00 PM, not carrying tobacco and liquor, that was a concern, and they dropped the tobacco. MAC, right now, at La Plaza, I believe, does carry tobacco, so that wouldn't affect his sales there, and we already have that. But there is a conversation, again, like Tammy shared, Parsons, that we are concerned about an additional business that's a convenience store, however, I also don't like to gatekeep, so it's, it's a difficult position to be in, and when I wanted to share that, really, I think a lot of the community feels, it's like, we want to be welcoming and excited about growth and business in the area, but there are these ordinances in place for a reason, and that's for us to be able to have these kind of conversations and think about, is a convenience store really is something that we want in a limited commercial space in the Inglewood District, especially since we already have that. I also wanted to mention a couple things that have not been mentioned already. Well, at least one is that they also agreed to not have games of chance in the convenience store, so we thought that was important, and a conversation that I've heard from the neighborhood, and they were quick to agree to that also, so wanted to mention that. And then, it was touched upon a little bit that we did have a conversation about the fact that it is in an arts district. What are they going to do with that thought process, you know? How is the convenience store going to look compared to, say, a convenience store on 40 Highway that's attached to a gas station, because it's definitely a different feel? And they heard what we were saying, we're not sure what they have planned for that. It was really the first time they, they even considered it or thought about it, which, again, I think that's a whole nother conversation with property owners in the area and maybe the city to start that conversation earlier about that special zoning. And then they did mention maybe providing some more unique food options, as far as, you know, the convenience side of things, so candies, snacks, things like that, that we would not find at, say, Price Chopper, which is right around the corner, or another convenience store. We have Quick Trip, and then we also have a couple along 23rd. So, they seemed amicable, amicable about that, we're just not sure at this point what they plan to do moving forward. So, wanted to share that conversation, again, not exactly for or against, but wanted to just share, so.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. All right, I'd like to invite the applicant back up. Teresa's comments made me think, and I wanted to give you an opportunity to talk about, since you've learned that it's an art district, if you've created some ideas or, or have some things to address that.
We were thinking about like the sign aspect of it. She wanted us to do like a 3D, like the neon signs that glow and, because they stand out, like, from distance. So, we were thinking about that, we could do like a sign that's different and colorful, that's related to art. Also, I was thinking about the whole building, like, we'd have to talk with the property owner, but if we can put design or paint on it, make it stand out, and also, if the community, like, they're painting, they want to promote, sell, we can sell those in the store.
Okay, anything else she'd like to address based on what you've heard?
Yes, that's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Chair?
Yes, Commissioner?
What kind of convenience food, other ones, would you have in there? I mean, I mean, is, I don't know how to say it properly, oriental style convenience stuff, or is it American style? What were you guys planning?
Yeah, American style.
American style, okay.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you so much. All right, any further discussion, commissioners? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing? All right, yes.
So, this is kind of addressed to the Inglewood folks back there, so...
I've closed the public hearing, so...
Well, they'll open it back.
No, he can comment.
Well, I can comment.
Yeah, you can comment, you just can't.
It's not a question, it's just a comment. But it'll lead to a question, maybe I can ask Rick, can I ask Rick?
Yes, you can ask staff.
He knows everything, I think.
Yes.
Does Inglewood have its own group that has some type of power to have things go a certain way?
They do have an overlay district.
Okay.
Or, it's, it's a zoning district, sorry.
It's just, but it's a zoning, it's not, you know, we want the rest, we suggest you put outdoor seating, or we suggest you do this, and, and have means of enforcing it.
Well, to better answer that, I would say, if there's anything, this is a special use permit. A lot of the things that I've heard said, before you vote, you would have to make sure you could put conditions on your... Recommendations for this, yeah. So, when a motion is made, you can add conditions.
So, based on the condition of no cigarettes or alcohol, or closing by 9:00 PM on the weekend or during the week, what have you?
Yes, because those would be conditions that we did not include in the staff report for the recommendations.
All right. Thank you, that's helpful. All right, with that said...
But this still goes to city council?
It, it does go to city council for, yes, this would be the recommending body with those conditions, city council would vote on that.
The city council could take those conditions off or add more at their pleasure, correct?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
I make a motion, we approve case 25-200-05, special use permit, 11037 East Winter Road.
And did you want to add any conditions?
No.
Okay, do I have a first? Do I have a second with no conditions? Okay, I have a first and a second with no conditions. And I will call for the vote.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill?
No.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Chair Wiley?
No. The motion does pass 4-2, as written case number... 252005, special use permit at 11037 East Winter Road. All right, thank you very much. And continue, I just strongly urge you to continue to work well with the Inglewood Arts District. All right, our next meeting is in two weeks. What does that look like, Rick?
I think there's only like two cases. Give me a second. I'm corrected, that is actually about six cases.
Six, okay. I like the first answer better.
So did I.
All right, thank you.
But yeah, other than that, nothing else to add, thank you.
All right, and anything good for the rest of us, for anyone?
Well, I had an observation in the presentation. Was that building really built in 19400?
What's...
B.C. or...
There were dinosaurs.
Okay.
Was that a...
It was just a typo, I think.
An extra zero or something.
1904, yeah.
I saw you chuckling up there, I didn't know what that was about.
But I didn't do it out loud, I hope, you just saw me, right?
No, it's funny, I, when I actually looked at the building on, there just off of Old Road on Parkledge, when I pulled in the parking lot, the first thing I noticed was a shopping cart sitting back against one corner of the parking lot.
Yeah.
And I thought, uh-oh, they got a homeless problem here.
Yeah.
And it's curious that they brought that to us during the meeting.
Yeah.
But that, that, that section on the, the south side between the building and the railroad, it looks like a friggin' jungle.
All right, well, what we do matters here, and I just want to thank you for your participation, and have a lovely night.
Before we adjourn, one of the things that...
Are you still talking to us?
Yes.
Okay, that's all right.
One of the things that pointed out was, there was a motion to approve that with no conditions. Yes. As opposed to the conditions that we had in the recommendations.
I mean, I, I just proved the way you guys presented it to us. I, I didn't change anything, it's just the way you guys presented, so those, those at the bottom still have to go with the application must approval, with the, with your guys' approval. No additional.
No additional, okay. So, is there no additional? All right.
Yeah.
If that was, okay, I just want to make sure.
I think, given the context of the previous conversation up here, it's fine.
Okay.
No one that listens to this would think that there was any clarity about what the commissioner was referring to when he said no conditions.
Yes.
Perfect. I just want to make sure there was a comment that was made.
The context is fine.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mitch, counselor.
I wouldn't take away too much you guys said there, yeah, yeah.
That's all we needed, thank you.
And for the record, Gabe, I want to compliment you on your memorization of what the code says and where, and all that was pretty impressive tonight, well done.
Yeah, I got to go through and read it again.
Well, you did a nice job, so... All right, have a lovely, lovely time, see you in two weeks. And we are adjourned at 7:02.